Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation in this small and liberated justice as a whole.
Could I have a motion to open the public meeting for the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals for Sag Harbor Village?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the first item on the agenda is up to approve the minutes. I had two changes for you, Carrie, just corrections. Does anybody else have any?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alex, are you on?
Is Alex?
Damon is on.
Yeah, Damon's here.
Hello?
Just made it.
There's a nine-one-seven number. I didn't know if it was Alex.
But he's not here yet. Okay. Um, then there's correspondence requiring action?
Oh, there's nothing.
There's nothing. Okay. So now we'll move on to old business. And first on the agenda is Five Washington Avenue. Alright, so um, we received your updated survey. For what else, Scott, right? Does everyone have any comments?
No comments.
No comment.
Not for me.
No comments.
Uh, so, yeah, we, I don't, yeah, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to Five Washington Avenue? Okay, nothing, nobody online or anything? Okay, so could I have a motion to close Five Washington Avenue?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I have a motion to
Make a motion for a written decision by our village attorney for Five Washington Avenue.
Okay, great. So we have a written decision, so.
Great.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want us to vote on that now or do it at the end?
We can do it again or do it now, whatever the board's preferences. It's up to you.
It looks like a long meeting. Let's, uh, yeah, I'll can go now.
You want me to read it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is an application for a new single-family residence to store investments on site. Originally, there were some variances for pyramid and from a conventional regulations to the side yard setback.
Thank you.
And for the basement areas and window wells to seventeen feet where the thirty-two feet is required, as well as a front yard setback from the front covered porch, which can be thirty-five feet required. And again, pyramid relief. So after hearing feedback from this board, the applicant actually amended their plans and moved the house, the proposed house, a little bit off and more towards the center of the property, eliminating the need for pyramid relief, and reducing some of the variance requested from this board. The lot is eight thousand seven hundred six square feet. The width of the lot is sixty-five feet, so it's a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And for the reasons set according to the determination, the board determined to grant the variances requested as amended.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision as written?
So, so move.
A second?
A second.
Second.
Hi.
Hi. Great, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is forty-one Redwood Road and sixty-two Cove, no, twenty-six Cove Road, sorry. Yes, please.
Um, just to make it clear, um, I do have those amendments initially, but it is the contact ending up for the project. He went into contact during the process of development of this project, so just want to make it clear that he is contacted up. Want to submit, have you checked it out? What? For a contact ending?
Do you submit my comments to the power of you because we can't hear anything?
We can submit it. Submit it. So I'll submit an amendment to that, to that, to that end.
Should the podium, I don't know, you realize that the speaker
The microphone's over you.
Yeah, the microphone is unfortunately above you.
Okay. So this application is for a new single family residence consisting of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet on a waterfront lot, which requires relief from the very yard setback from the street side of fifteen feet where thirty feet is required and requires both skyplane relief of five hundred and forty-eight cubic feet on a non-conforming lot consisting of twelve thousand one hundred and fifteen feet, eleven thousand four hundred and ninety feet, global that relief. On the corner of Redwood Road and Cove Road, with an out of the house entrance, the street front is approximately a hundred and eighty feet curved around the corner of Cove and Redwood Roads, and the front yard's approximately sixty feet of waterfront. The lot is non-conforming as the lot area and lot width and is currently in the phase. And this is the last one. I have to grab for you the five factors that the board is part with dealing with, but I would like to give the architect an opportunity to go over some of the drawings that you, I think, just submitted this afternoon, that give a little more detail on the things that the board had asked for at the prior meeting. Now, given that opportunity to do that now, Craig Arm, Craig Arm is the architect and he is on.
Okay, before you start, Carrie, so the drawings are different than the ones?
The drawings are the same. We submitted updated diagrams that a board has.
Oh, it's down in here, okay.
It's an updated pyramid analysis.
Okay.
Shows the difference, the points on the rest that require pyramid relief and where those are. There's also a street front analysis.
Right. So was the architect here at the prior meeting?
He was as well.
I swore it. No, he was sworn in.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe he was. He may not have been, because I don't think he tried.
Okay. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Hi, Craig Arm, eight oh one Montauk Highway, West Hampton Beach, New York.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
All right, thank you, everyone. So shortly before the last meeting, I believe it was the day of, we had submitted just the, an amended plan where we reduced the gross floor area so that we comply with the maximum gross floor area allowed. There was a discrepancy on, with the survey and the one calculation, so we did revise that to comply. And I believe, as Tiffany said before, we never intended to look for that in a variant, so that, that does comply. What we submitted today, um, there was, um, the board last, at the last hearing, had asked if we could update our pyramid drawing just to break down the different areas. So essentially, we have areas A, B, C, D, uh, there's E, which you can't really see here, and then F, which we did that, we broke down all of the, the areas individually, so as we talk about them, you'll be able to see where they are. So this is essentially the same drawing as last time. It's just the areas that are broken out. And we also labeled just the property line and some of the topography and the elevations along the property line, just for clarity for that. So moving through the drawings, this was just an alternate view where you could just see the other area E and how the property and with the house, because of that curvature of the road, which is quite unique, um, it was, we submitted the three-dimensional just because the two-dimensional, you really couldn't accurately depict what was going on with the property. So that's really just for, for clarity. So that was the, the first thing that was submitted today as, as an adjustment. Additionally, the same as last time as well, um, there's the thirty-foot set yard, thirty-foot setback drawing showing if we take this straight line right through the house, what area is requiring the variance from the thirty-foot setback line. And essentially, this is the same drawing that it was last time, but just a few dimensions added in the same road property line and some topography, um, site elevations added as well for that. So just some different angles kind of illustrating the same thing, but the numbers of what for non-conforming and what we're looking for is the same as, as last time. And then last, sorry, go ahead.
We just, so that seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy is the amount of cubic feet on the streetward side of the thirty-foot setback line?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Correct. And the last thing that was submitted today was really just for illustration, where I know with some of the correspondence, there's been discussions about how close we are to the property line. And I just wanted to sort of illustrate something showing that yes, while we are close, there's no question, um, based on the actual shape of the lot, the house isn't just one big box. Um, and that we did try and take that into consideration within the design, stepping the house away from the road wherever possible. Um, and so though, while we do get as close as, I believe, where fifteen feet, ten inches, the average is actually twenty feet, point four, really just for, you know, be able to give a little bit of a visual representation and that it's not just this seventy-foot wide house that's fifteen feet from the property line, just this sort of helped illustrate that. So those were really the, uh, the revisions that were submitted, really just for a little bit more information, but happy to answer any questions, or I'm not sure if Tiffany's going to explain anymore now, whatever, whatever the board would like.
And I can take it from there and talk a little bit about, um, the area of Redwood Island and the neighborhood and talk about five factors that the board has, within its charge to, to think about and with respect to an application like this. We don't believe there's going to be any undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Redwood Island is nearly completely built out at this point, the single-family residences that have, all have, most have accessory structures, including the neighboring properties who have a pool in ten feet from the applicant's property. Just by way of comparison, um, the house just to the west of this, which I believe is owned by Mr. Samuel, received approval from this board as well as from the harbor committee for that construction. Um, it does have nearly a three thousand square feet of habitable space on the lot. It is not three thousand square feet of GFA because he does have a full basement under his house. This applicant is not, has chosen not to dig into, take into the, into the area, try to put a basement in, um, and has chosen not to ask for any accessory structures at this point. So most of the space weight that you see, and the reason why the GFA is very close to what is permitted on the lot is due to the storage necessities and things that other structures have, like sheds and things that are not going to be present on this property. The residence has proposed situate more toward the street to achieve the best setbacks and wetlands for the preservation of fifty-foot wide non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer that's required by the harbor committee. Um, so Craig, could you put up the survey, please?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Um, so if you take a look at just the basic survey or site plan there, you can see, actually Saskis' survey.
Oh, yes, yeah, let me, this was the sanitary. Sorry, everyone.
Um, at any rate, on the survey, you'll be able to see that there is a bit of a push and pull on this project because we are trying to accommodate the requirements of the harbor committee, and we have achieved that by proposing a fifty-foot non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer from the wetland line as required. But it did require, so there's fifteen feet, I believe, between the edge of the wetland line and the buffer and what I'm going to call the back of the house, for your purposes, is the front of the house. So there's a very small area between the buffer that will be established and the location of the house, which again caused the house to be pushed forward more towards the house, more towards the street, necessitating the variance that we have here. Whether the benefit can be sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. Unfortunately, because of the shape of the lot and because of the requirements of the harbor committee for fifty-foot wide, fifty-foot wide buffer, um, and the shape of this lot, which as you can see is sort of a rounded pie-shaped lot, with long triangular, long street line, and a much smaller waterfront line, demands a rear yard variance for the street side in order to comply with the buffer requirements. With respect to the skyplane issue, we believe the request is a modest five hundred and forty-eight cubic feet, which is a total, a total approachment to the skyplane, which is a common variance issued by this board, particularly in circumstances where the lot is non-conforming as the size, particularly this. The proposal meets all the other lot coverage, building coverage, and side yard setbacks. The requested variance as well, they may appear substantial at first blush, or not substantial under these particular lot conditions. The request for setback relief is based on the size and shape of the lot, taking into consideration the environmental conditions on the site, which are the wetlands and, hi, I, I've heard mentioned in the correspondence of potential bluff crest, and we're having the surveyor look at that, but I've also looked at the neighboring property owner's survey and his bluff crest ends somewhere in the middle of his yard. So I'm not sure it extends all the way down to four twenty-six. The surrounding residences in the area are all historically situate on non-conforming lots. And there are a few which I have mentioned in my memorandum, which I will hand up to the board. I apologize, it does have a typo with respect to the size of the house. But most of the houses have received some type of relief from this board as well as relief from the harbor committee because most of them don't need setbacks there as well. The difficulty here, although some can say it was self-created because we are proposing to build constructive residence on the property, however, the lot is pre-existing, non-conforming, in many ways oddly shaped with a rounded street front and narrow waterfront access, making it very difficult to comply with zoning while ensuring the protection of the waterfront and the requirements of the harbor committee. The board should also consider the village's zoning code in its entirety when considering the requested variance. Since the R twenty zoning district in which this lot is situate requires a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. The lot in question is eleven thousand four hundred and ninety feet of upland area and is undersized for R twenty. The setback in skyplane restrictions were often tried to be applicable to twenty thousand square foot lots. And we're easy, are easy to comply on on lots that meet that lot area and are nearly impossible to meet on substandard lots that are less than twenty thousand square feet. This other sized lot was not, was not created by the applicant, and actually, this is the result of a legal merger of two lots that had been held, it's not in single and separate ownership, so those two lots have merged by law under village zoning. Would that's a question that I can answer or that Craig can answer at this time?
Can you put the survey up?
Sure. Craig, did you find the survey?
Yes, yeah, I thought it was up. Sorry, is it?
Oh, no, it's not, sorry.
Is it, is it up?
Yes, it is now.
Okay, sure, sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you, Craig. And that illustrates for the board just the sort of push and pull we have on the project and where we have the wetland boundaries that like green line down towards the bottom and the red line indicates, the red dotted line indicates the non-disturbance, non-fertilization fa- buffer, the amount of fifty feet, which I will note will hit, directly hit the neighbor's swimming pool because he provided a thirty-foot off of, to the wetlands at the time that his house was constructed. So the regulations in effect at that time were slightly different and did not require, require, require the fifty-foot buffer as they do now. In the past, I know the harbor committee had been a little, a little less strict with their buffer requirements that allowed a thirty-foot buffer on that side.
Great, thank you. Val, I think you had some comments about the pyramid, I don't know if you?
I did. We tend to measure every plan that comes before our board to check for pyramid. As a standard for building permit application, every project needs to demonstrate four elevations at quarter scale with a pyramid law, irrespective of the application coming before this board. There's nothing on any elevations indicate any pyramid law. It is a tricky property to try to designate that or delineate that pyramid law. But I will actually spend time, as with a previous project where the applicant showed us what he believed to be the pyramid law, and we found a three thousand square foot infraction. So in looking at your plan, I can't apply that standard to your drawing because there's nothing to scale. You have no red line here saying skyplane. So I think that would help. You have a very helpful diagram, but the diagram here is meaningless because it's a diagram. There's nothing you can put a dimension to, to scale off the pyramid on that drawing.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, I guess what I could do is print this in actual cross-sections through each, each area. The thing that was difficult was exactly what point do you pick because it was ever-changing around the curve, but I guess, would you like me to do sort of maybe at each corner point, like something parallel?
Through the chest. Well, the typical standard with most architects drawing with a computer is you can demonstrate that pyramid law line as it bisects the house and come up with a calculation, but more so it's for the building permit. So irrespective, if you came to this village building department for a zoning relief, you need to show on your drawing the pyramid law, and these drawings have nothing.
No, understood, which I, I was well aware of that, which is why I kind of developed this model because quite honestly, we couldn't, until we developed it in three dimensions, it was impossible for me to calculate the exact area, which was able to be done as we built the three-D model. But I'm, I'm happy to try and add as many points and elevations to try and arrive at that on an actual set of plans.
Right, you may be able to use this to help construct the elevations, your diagram to help you construct your elevations. And then it would be good to, to show what the, you know, the finished first floor is and what the natural grade elevations are on your elevations so that it's, it's clearly noted so we can tell.
Okay. Okay, not, not a problem, happy to do that.
Do we have any other letters from the neighbors?
Yes.
You've gotten, um, everyone was forwarded to you guys.
I have a question just for, for clarification. So there will be two separate septic systems within the same property because there's an easement for the house next door, that's correct. Yeah, okay.
And that is permitted by the Suffolk County Health Department. This, the easement on the, I'm going to call it the eastern side of the property, was actually taken by adverse possession claim by the neighbor. I, both in the driveway and for the sanitary system, so because he has no real common property at all. And so both the party law and sanitary system were done by adverse possession by the neighbor.
Yeah, it's just there's, within the community, there's such a sensitivity these days to clean water and whatever, and that's a, a lot that's basically half the size of what's allowed, so to have two septic systems on it.
Right, the lot next door has no septic system.
Yeah, I understand.
And has a house on it.
I understand, I understand, but that's, that's sort of pre-existing. What we're doing now is adding another septic system, which we'll have to sort of, if we're going to allow that, we're going to have to sort of explain that to the community, so.
Well, that's in the, in the scope of the Suffolk County Health Department, to be honest with you. But in the scope of this board, Suffolk County Health Department deals with sanitary systems. They have told us.
Okay, I just wanted to raise it as an issue. We don't, we're not going to settle it down.
I understand the concept of it, but there is a house that it's connected to next door.
So Liz, is that something we can find out from, I mean, was the easement granted by the health department for the, the neighboring property?
Do I copy of the easement's reference on the survey?
That would be great, okay.
You would say.
Okay, right, and Val, I think you had a couple more.
No, in listening to the applicants, point by point, it was made reference to the house adjacent to this property that they have a basement and that their house is larger and that, you know, you're not doing such, where you can't do that because you're in a flood zone and the house has to be built on piles, and therefore it can't have a basement. I think that comparison, you know, we can't judge the merit of this application based on what the neighbor has, which is a full basement next door, but in terms of the shape, it is a very constrained lot. It doesn't seem as if this house has met the curvature of the lot that's being presented in a long rectangle. It's, uh, design-wise, it's something very difficult to work around. In terms of the point number two, the accessory structures, you would never be able to fit them on the lot. As you said, it's eleven thousand square feet. All lots are non-conforming to some degree in this village because they are less than the twenty thousand square foot standard. So the bullet point number six, it's just the nature of Sag Harbor. You're not going to meet a twenty thousand square foot lot. But the skyplane was a point we spoke about, and I think that the neighbor's house also was constructed prior to the GFA code, so his house may be large, but it certainly doesn't set the standard. Uh, I think each is an individual case by case. And, and this one needs a lot of study because that, if you go back to the initial diagram that shows the red through the entire home, if you could back up that, this one shows, I'd say, over fifty percent of the house is non-conforming, that, that red portion, which gives cause for concern. So just something to talk about amongst ourselves, but that's my first reaction in seeing this application.
Great, thank you. Tim, do you?
No, nothing else.
Okay, Damon, do you have anything?
I'm really, Val's concerned about the, you know, basically, you know, half the house being, you know, being built as a new house being non-conforming.
Great, and is Alex connected? Do we have Alex?
I can see him.
Oh.
Oh, I'm here. Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, do you have any comments?
Yeah, obviously, I, you know, visually, it's my first time seeing it, but visually, it's, uh, it is a little alarming that, as Val said, about two-thirds of the house is non-conforming. I appreciate that the owner and the architect have tried, you know, given the fifty-foot wetland, you know, parameter on the other side, I think they've, they've made a genuine effort to try and, you know, step the house back and to work with that non, non-typical curved property line. So, but it does seem to me that overall, it's a big house, given those constraints on this particular lot, and so, and again, because I missed the last two meetings and I apologize for that, uh, but this is old business, so when this came up.
This is the, the first time we're hearing this, though. We're not, it was just open and entered. It wasn't discussed.
Oh, I see, I got you, okay. So I'm just curious, has there been any suggestion by the, by the board or by the owner, applicant, uh, and architect to consider reducing the size because it is a, it seems to be a rather large house? So that would be certainly one way to better conform with the property setback issues.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, the only, the, sure.
Is that the, the general sentiment of the board? I'm trying to get it applied in some direction, so it's the general sentiment of the board.
Can you just review for the board?
Can you just review for the board, the original relief from the notice has changed, right?
Yes.
GFA, you agree what you need and that you don't need now?
You do not need the GFA variance. The um, pyramid variance has been reduced to, it was eighty twenty one, right? And it has been reduced to
Five something.
Five forty eight. Um, the original house was two nine six nine, it's two nine one nine. Um, and those are the only things, front yard setback, yeah.
Um, there's, there's.
Those are the two variances that we're seeking.
Uh, well, there would be one additional one because um, your driveway is actually, part of it is on the property line and there needs to be a five foot separation there. So you could either reduce that sort of back end space or that would have to be noted for a variance.
We'll work on that. I I don't think that we want to see the variance for that, but it is difficult given the neighbor's approach and onto property.
Right. It's, it's really the um, the one that directly against Redwood Road there.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions before we open it up to the public? No, do you have anything else, Tiffany, before we?
Not, not anything else.
Okay, so is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to forty one Redwood Road and twenty six Cove Road?
Yes.
I, uh, they already.
Great, great. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. Proceed.
So a couple of points, Val, thank you for noticing probably the biggest point I was here to make was I I found the volume calculations on this. Um, as you can see, most of the house needs really huge street. It's not competing with the streetscape of Redwood. It's not competing with the water side scape of Redwood. Um, I have to say, I'm also an architect, so some of this is knowledge that I'm aware of. You can put water side, uh, east or set that. There's no reason why this house, on the type of foundation it has to have, could not be right on that fifty foot lot. Um, they're leaving themselves open for future, you know, expansion, not this particular application. But I kind of see the writing on the wall that they, the new owner after it sold, this is effectively venture, would try to put a pool in that remaining fifteen feet. I'm not saying to get it, but they're bootstrapping and they're setting it up to do that. Uh, the relief on the front volume, the three hundred or five hundred cubic feet, I challenge that. I think it's much more than that. Um, there's also no site drain. The house being pushed so close to the road, limited things down on the area, or sorry, site drain. Not being aware of that. Val, I'll give the points about volume. So that's pretty much, you know, what I know.
Great, thank you. Um, a question for the architect. Um, there is a catch basin shown sort of at the corner, but I'm assuming that's existing and part of the street drainage, correct? It's not your catch basin.
Right.
Great.
Sorry, yes, yeah, this, this is part of the street um, catch basin.
So there's no, there is no drainage shown. I mean, there are no drive, I don't see any, do you see any drawl for any drainage down?
Sorry, there, there aren't any um, shown on here yet, but uh, but yes, we will have to address all site drainage as well, yes.
So we, we would want that shown on here because there, there're going to have to be a lot of them. There's not very much room to put them because the roof will have to, definitely the roof will have to drain into something.
Agreed.
Uh, septic system.
Right, and the septic system takes up that whole area. Yeah, great. Um, and yes, please approach. We'll, um, we'll do the members in the audience for here first and then we'll do online, if that's okay? Um, what you, could you state your name and address for the record?
David Brimland, fifty one Redwood Road.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Great.
Um, I agree with all the, all the arguments against this project. And I also think, first of all, we weren't even notified about this, like, we're supposed to send a letter to each neighborhood.
My neighbor Jason property?
Yeah.
Well, you're here, so.
Yeah, well, we weren't notified. Um, and the proposal is like far too aggressive. You know, it's not keeping with the neighborhood. The design, I think, is, it does, it doesn't represent Sag Harbor. It doesn't represent any of the other homes well. I think it's actually going to be harmful to the environment around us. It's going to be harmful to the character of our neighborhood. So I think it should be reviewed on those bases as well. And there should be, it should provide some sort of rendering of the streetscape versus what, what's, what's currently there and what we'll see, like, like we see when it's all said and done. I don't think the drawings right now do, do a good justice of that. Um, there's water problems on the street. I see the water coming out uh, of that lot all the time, living across the street. And I, I don't see adequate site drainage. In fact, I'm almost positive they're going to have to build a retaining wall around that property in order to get the septic approved. And then I don't know how that affects, you know, the, the heights and everything else and the existing grade. And where all that runoff is going to go. Um, so I think there should be like lot fill calculations proposed to the, the board so they can make an educated decision on what's actually, how, how big of a project this is going to be. There's no piling shown on the plans, which almost every house in Redwood that's built in those conditions has pilings. Um, so I just going through some of the things that I do see the sliders in the back all facing the water. These giant sliders in the front and back going away. There's no patio, there's no, there's nothing. So obviously, there's gotta be, nobody want to live like that. Like, there's gotta be some pathways or, uh, so I think a full, a full landscape plan, a full education plan, re-vedge plan uh, should be proposed in order to make this decision properly. Um, there's no hardship here. I mean, this is a developer building on a, on a, on a subject too, doesn't even own the property. So it's not like this is some family lot that they inherited and they were trying to redevelop. Like, so I don't think the argument of having that septic to work around or these weird constraints to work around is a good argument. They don't, they don't have to buy it. They don't have to buy the lot. It's still for sale. Um, and I don't think new rules or new setbacks should be some, they should be harping about the neighbors setbacks because those are new rules and you don't have to buy the property. You either you're aware of the rules, you're aware of the pyramid, you're aware of the setbacks. So then you should design accordingly. That's why they were made. Um, and that was, the other thing was the driveway and see that detail properly. Yeah, so, I mean, all in all, I just don't think that the applicant has done a good job of detailing the architecture, the, the overall design, the landscape. I mean, I think the whole thing should just be rejected until it's fully, you know, designed so that you guys can really look at it from a, a, a better perspective of the overall impact and the character and how it's gonna really fit into the neighborhood. So those are all my points. Um, yeah, it's a.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Can you hear me? I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we're going to do the people in the audience here first and then the people online.
Okay.
Um, great. Could you state your?
Twenty one Cove Road.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Great, proceed.
I also have a letter from another neighbor. Do you want me to read it or just submit it to the record? And then I'll speak on my behalf.
You can submit it.
Just submit it, okay. Uh, yeah, so I pretty much, uh, you know, grew up on Redwood. My grandfather built the house on Redwood in the seventies. Um, my father's an architect, well acquainted with all the neighbors there. Um, to make this statement that it's not going to hurt the character of the neighborhood, it's absolutely ridiculous. There are some large houses going up on Redwood. A lot of the old houses are being torn down. But this is one of the original Redwood lots from the original subdivision. So it calls for an originally scaled house to Redwood. There are some of the original cottages left on Redwood. That is an appropriate plan for this type of lot with these constraints. If you want to just build a three thousand square foot house, there are plenty of lots to do that, and this is not one of them. When you purchase a lot, you, you know what your intent is to build there. You have to do a study of that lot. Can I build what I want to build on this property? And if the answer is no, then you shouldn't buy the property. To ask for this amount of relief and this amount of variances is almost insulting to the board because it tells people like me that I can just build whatever I want on any property that I want in the village of Sag Harbor. Um, it's, that's a really terrible precedent going forward. It's going to hurt Redwood, it's going to hurt the village. And I think it should be an absolute no. Um, and these guys should re-hit the drawing board. If they want to move forward with a real application that is sensitive to the lot, then they should do that. But this is just kind of a ridiculous thing to propose for any type of approval from the board.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, you can come forward.
Uh, I'm Roman Lozal. I live in the neighborhood.
Could you state your address?
I would like to make a comment.
Can you state your address? Your address?
Yes, fifteen Redwood Road.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, proceed.
So I don't mean to waste any of this time, but because this remark is emotional. I've lived in this village for, this is my thirty fourth year now. And I have witnessed the changes that have taken place. And there were many changes, absolutely wonderful. And there were mistakes, including who my neighbor was on the other. And uh, and they are incredible, but they're real. And I would like to make certain that we don't make any wrong mistakes on, on the, in that area. And um, especially in very set environmentally sensitive areas like the proposed project. And we have seen mega mansions being built on no land virtually, the entire parcel. That can't be right. So this is my emotional comment. I'm against the project.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Hi, John Ferbitt, attorney. Um, and uh, I'm here representing one of the neighbors proposing the project. I don't worry. I, I did submit a memo to the board, which I think I've heard it referenced, so I don't want to repeat that entire memo if I waste your time. I know you read it. Couple of comments from listening tonight is, uh, I would follow up on the septic system. Uh, to me, I don't see that it was designed, I don't see any engineering. I've been a design manager. I think it may be just that someone plays the septic system, here's where it could go. And echoing someone else's comment, when I'm looking at the plans, to me, it just doesn't make sense. Yeah, I think we're gonna have to do a lot of retaining wall. Uh, it doesn't, I don't know if it meets setbacks to the house. I don't know if it meets setbacks from the road. Uh, I do know that it's probably going to require a lot of uh, digging as well as the house itself, which portions of the house meet the height rules by, by essentially digging out the ground. Uh, so I really become concerned that between the septic system and just the amount, I mean, it's an eleven thousand square foot lot, a three thousand square foot home. But I don't think that begins to tell the story. I think there's going to be a extensive amount of grading and regrading here. And with the flooding in the area and the magnitude of the variances requested, it just makes sense to have it depict this on, on top plans for you, so you see, to see where it comes from. Uh, the, the other thing I wanted to comment on is this is not a bunch, what I'm listening tonight is, this is not a bunch of neighbors saying, oh, save this lot, don't ever like to build on. These are very rational comments saying, hey, look, um, just because the code says that there's a maximum gross floor area, doesn't mean that you, you get to build that maximum on every single lot. I also hear references, well, they need a front yard, they need a rear yard variance, they need a pyramid variance. Well, actually, you need rear yard variances from, you know, the entire, the entire circumference of the, of the road there, two rows. You also need pyramid variances from essentially all the property lines. As pointed out by the board, a majority of the house is built within the fifteen uh, or the thirty foot setback. Um, there are ways that, you know, if, if someone came into my practice and said to me, I'm thinking about buying this lot, we would try to design around these constraints. To me, this looks like somebody said, I want a three thousand square foot house, let's put it here. Uh, it's seventy four feet long. Uh, I mean, it, it, there's nine foot ceilings. Uh, there, there are so many ways that they could eliminate or recuse the requesting variances. Someone else said before too, it's almost insulting to, to come here and say, uh, yeah, um, this is, this is what we want and we want you to grant all these variants. It puts the board in a, in a tough spot. Finally, and I, I do worry that part of this is, let's throw a three thousand square foot house over the fence and we'll, we'll pare it back down to twenty five hundred square feet, uh, and then it'll get approval. I don't think twenty five hundred square feet. I mean, this is, the minimum size house, this, this is one of the most constrained lots in Sag Harbor. That's not exaggeration. The minimum size house is eight hundred fifty square feet. Start there, try to get more if you're not okay. Don't start at maximum and work your way down. We're much closer to eight hundred fifty square feet here than we are to three thousand. And that was my comments. I assume the record will be held open for a bit later in this?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you. Yep. Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience to speak? No?
Can you hear me online if they're finished?
Right. We'll call when we're ready for Zoom.
Yeah, I don't know if you can chat.
Great, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Herb Samuel, twenty two Cove Road.
Great, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Thank you.
Great, proceed.
Uh, I'll be very brief here.
Great, thank you.
I was actually surprised that I was called out by name and by my house itself, but just a few little clarifications. These are very different properties. While the subject property is very low lying, very hard. The house property sits here ten, even ten feet above that property. So it was very different conditions. Secondly, there was an existing house there where uh, the septic system, not unlike what is happening here, was basically uh, built on the water side of the house, of the, of the then existing house and was, no question about leaching, uh, untreated septic into the code. It's already one of the most impacted bodies of water uh, anywhere in the conic estuary. And it's uh, it, it's something that we all as citizens, and by the way, Liz asked me to uh, state that I was a member, I'm also a member of the harbor committee, but I'm here as a private citizen and as a neighbor, obviously.
You're not speaking on behalf of the board.
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Um, and just a couple of other points because it was brought into the, onto the record about my house. There was no net filled void at all. I restored the entire bluff, which was a rotting, a verging act. Uh, there were no trees removed. I did not remove a single tree. And the basement of this two thousand square foot house, that's really the size of the house, the basement was based on a pre-existing design. It was already there. So it was, guess was enlarged, but we maintained, uh, in fact, we pulled the house back from the wetlands line and we maintained what was then a setback from the street. And, and at that point, the both zoning board and the harbor committee thought that that was a great solution because we were uh, creating an environmentally beneficial uh, project, but not worsening anything else that was there. Thank you very much.
Great, yes, I remember your project. Can be for the board. Yes, thank you. Great, thank you. Um, so now we can go to, is uh, anybody else in the audience? We'll go to Zoom.
We have Gregory, Gregory Loufeyers hand up and Hillary.
Okay, whatever, whoever you want to start with.
Hillary's right there.
Hillary, go ahead.
Hi, well, I'm.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, Hillary Loomis. I'm at one two nine Redwood. I'm also.
Can you raise your right hand?
Sorry, can you see me?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Great, you may proceed.
So I'm at one two nine Redwood Road, also co-director of Sag, Sag Harbor, and Herb is a friend of mine. And I, I drive by this lot almost every day. Um, when he, when Herb alerted me to the size it was going to be, I just thought this is. Um, when he, when Herb alerted me to the size it was gonna be, I just thought, this is ridiculous. It's a very small lot, the number of variances that are required are not good. I mean, the ZBA's mandate is to do the fewer variances that you can. This is not a development that works in that space. They could come back with a more charming diminutive cottage, which might work. Uh, but this is ridiculous to have a three thousand square foot house in that space, dwarfing their neighbors. It's just, it's not what Sac Harbor is about, and I hope you do not grant them the variances. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And you had, there was someone else?
Gregory Loukmeier. You just have that.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Gregory Loukmeier. I uh, been, have had a house at one-four-one Redwood Road uh, for forty-five years.
Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, proceed.
Um, I'm also an architect. One of the things that I would think a prudent person would do and would suggest perhaps you asked for is a zoning analysis of the site to see what by right could be constructed. And as several of the uh, previous speakers have said, uh, rather than start with the maximum and and see what you can get, at least let's understand what this property could support. I think at this point, the um, the house is way too big. Um, I think that uh, obviously it's out of scale with most of the rest of uh, of Redwood. And um, it seems to be that they're protecting the water, which is quite important, obviously, but not really protecting the streetscape or the environment to uh, for all of our neighbors. As Hillary said, we all drive by this uh, every day. This is gonna become kind of the totem that everybody thinks about as you drive into Redwood. And I'm not sure that that's really an appropriate um, image to to set as as we all drive uh, in and out of uh, our area. So uh, I'm not gonna repeat what many of the others said. I think they all had good points. I think the bottom line is uh, nobody's particularly happy with granting a lot of variances. Uh, why don't we see what this piece of property could support? And then see what perhaps can be negotiated if in fact people still want to buy it.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there anybody else? Carrie? Where are we?
Nobody else on the phone?
Okay. Great. Uh, Tiffany, do you want to respond to any?
I don't think so, but I think the um, contract ended.
Okay, great. Great. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Peter Manchamilly, nine Pond Crossing, Southampton.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
First of all, thank you all for being here and doing what you do. I appreciate it. It's part of my life. I just want to address the things I heard tonight, so that the board doesn't have their time wasted in a lot of issues. They're not issues. First of all, um, I coach Little League with Ed Burke, David Saskin, so much other guys. My kids grew up here in town. Um, my house was built here in two thousand. And um, it's Southampton right now temporarily, but I'll get back to Sac Harbor. I have three children who were raised and grew up in this village, and this home is for us. I'm not doing a bait and switch here and looking to sell. It's not what I do. This is not an investment property for me. I'm looking, we're back to Sac Harbor, um, as my family grew up.
Right, just so you know, though, the board can't take any of that into consideration. It's just it it just, no, no, that's good. I just right, but it doesn't matter to us if it was gonna be sold tomorrow or if you're gonna live there for a hundred years.
I like that, but sincerely, I plan to live there. Um, I actually like that I can walk into town from there. It's one of my favorite things about it. And I can uh, I potentially have a small boat in the backyard as well. Um, so uh, those are the things I love about it. Um, it's my understanding, being in business, that the property existed before the codes existed. I'm not sure everybody understands that. So I think, I think you guys understand that, obviously, I don't need to go into that. Um, and Craig and I worked really hard to to try and create a house. Like, I don't have extra rooms in this house. It's a kitchen and living room. And then there's bedrooms for my kids, and my two boys who are twins, twenty years old, are gonna share a room. Right, so I I don't think I'm asking for a lot, you know, you know, the master bathroom is modest. The master bedroom is modest. You know, there's one small closet in the bedroom. Um, just for my three children and I, this is gonna be a tight house for us, you know? Um, there's a little room downstairs, I plan on maybe one of my sons using whatever from college, so he doesn't have to share with his brother. But there's not many places that could cut back on this, and as far as ceiling, that's sort of the common about nine foot. This, this is nine foot here. I don't think there's nine foot, I think it's lower than that. I think the second floor is closer to eighty two, what we're proposing. So we started out with, hey, I love ten foot ceilings, I'd love nine foot ceilings upstairs at minimum, and we scaled all that back before we came to you.
Um, the plans say nine foot ceilings and eight foot six on the second floor.
That's right, but that's, that's rather modest in in these times, right?
Well, for Sac Harbor, though, we vary and go much lower than that. So, I mean, it's just
Just want to point out that we really did work on this, and I I understand everybody's opposition, you know? Um, I I worked uh, many architects out here, and one of them said one time, you know, everyone um, becomes a conservationist after they build their house. So uh, I get it, I've been in these areas before. And if anyone has any questions for me, uh, I was involved in design uh, every bit of it with Greg. Um, you can ask me questions. The other thing is the septic system. We just did a project on Mecos Fay, which is actually a really sensitive water volume as well, more than this code. And we have three and a half feet of groundwater, and we didn't raise grade at all. They've got new septic systems that use rectangular blocks, and they don't need much room at all. We have a septic system designed by Delandro here. It conforms, and it's already into the health department. Health Department likely approves it, um, pending the approvals I get from Sac Harbor. So that's all been addressed. Grade there doesn't change at all. And I know the house is gonna be close to the street. I don't love that either. If I need to do some screening in the front, I'm completely open to that. It could be covenanted, I'm fine with that. I'm I'm looking to be a a a good neighbor and a a continuing good member of society in uh, Sac Harbor, as we said.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the board, to any of the board members have questions or? So um, does anyone have any more comments that will help them? I think it would be good for us to see, if you have a septic design that you think is gonna be approved, we would want to see that to make sure that, because in very, it's true, very often in cases like this, the grade has to be raised to accommodate the septic system, and then you have to have retaining walls. It happens in Redwood all the time. And that would be something to consider because then the house might have to be raised, which would then increase the pyramid variance and um, I mean, I I personally think it's big for the property. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Are we at a stage now or are we trying to get more things presented?
Well, um, I think that they would like some feedback about what we think of the initial proposal.
Well, I I'd make an observation, it's just an observation, but the property is sensitive enough that it is on the Southampton Towns list of uh, properties to be acquired using CPF funds. And given that and the sensitivity of the property, I have a problem with granting significant um, variances. I would like to see them be extremely minor, if any at all. I think the idea of starting with what you could build as, as of right, given that it's such a sensitive property, might be the right way to go about it. I'm sorry to say that, in my view, maybe that's not, this isn't the right property for the house that that you want.
Val, do you have any comments?
No, there were comments, uh, Mr. Tarbit's testimony mentioned about the septic system. The uh, contract then de answered in terms of the the manner in which they would install such a system, but I would like to correct the, the, your counsel. As an architect, I design these things for a living as well. This board has purview over anything that we see on a survey or in the form of a drawing, where we can comment in a professional manner. So if that thing needs to move to another part of the property, we can say with certainty that can be moved. But I'm looking at this, it meets a five foot setback. We don't know that it's an official survey um, with a proposed application at, with the Board of Health, but now little bit more color, but it still feels very tight. This, that diagram that came up is representative of something that's being shoehorned into the, into the property. If you go back to the red, red uh, zone illustration, the three D, and that's a very telling image.
I think that's a deceptive image, though, Val, because that looks like, what you said, fifty percent of the house looks like it's extra variance, it's not. If you look at the square footage, it's, it's nothing near that. One more thing that you may not know, someone commented on that fifty foot buffer in the rear yard. DC sixty-five, DC granted ten foot relief from seventy-five to sixty-five.
We applied the law for the zoning. We don't apply the law for the wetlands.
But it's, but yeah, another encumbrance, right?
Right.
It's an encumbrance that we have to deal with.
Yeah.
The property has to deal with, um, and and anyone, because it is, it is a viable lot for a single family residence. So any person that's gonna propose a single family residence on the lot is gonna have to deal with those very issues. It's a matter of law.
I think this is
But that diagram does show what is gonna, that's the thirty foot setback line cutting through your house. So that the line is right in relation to the property line, that is true. That's a true diagram of what's, I mean, it's not just, you know, we can't scale it, but that gives you a graphic um, image of what is gonna happen with the house in terms of the, of what the setback is supposed to be.
Correct, because of the architect who spoke, his name was Gregory Loukmeier. So Mr. Loukmeier's testimony said, let's get a feasibility study. That's it. Look at the yellow. That's more or less what's buildable for this property without a zoning variance.
Let me get you those square footers, I just wanted to know.
We'll get you the square footage, we'll submit all of that, um, I, and I'll just point out that Mr. Loukmeier also received significant relief from this board.
Everyone that spoke here.
Right, right. Well, we're not, we're, we're not saying that we wouldn't give you relief because we understand that this is a very difficult site to deal with, and you have a lot of constraints. You've got water, you've got a funny shaped lot, you've got a street, it's narrow, it's weird.
And I have a family, and and I think, you know, anybody, I think a smaller house than this, much smaller, is inconsistent with the neighborhood of Redwood. I think your, your house in Redwood is three thousand, you know?
I can do, excuse me. Um, I'm trying to provide the board with an analysis of the actual gross floor area of the houses in the area because I do think that it is within the character of Redwood, unfortunate, fortunately or unfortunately, as much as anyone would like to dispute that. Um, even the house next door that we talked about earlier, and I know he's upset because his name was mentioned, but um, he started with a nine hundred and seventy square foot house. Irrespective of what year we were in or what regulations or degrees at that time, everyone has taken their houses and expanded them, and most of them are well over twenty-five hundred square feet.
Right, but I guess what, what you're hearing, though, what, I think what you're hearing from the public and the board is, though, that on this particular site, that amount seems large. That's all. A ham you had a
Yeah, I, my, my feeling taking into consideration the size and what you're doing or even building is very challenging. And I think the consideration with this particular lot lessens more.
Uh, is there, is there something specific, some advice you can give us?
Um, I think you're just hearing that the, in general, we feel that it's too big and too close to the street. And and that it would be better to start from a point of what's acceptable and, you know, try to work with that out than, you know, a big number working down.
We always put together a survey of the building out of the line, so we
But I I think it would be good to think, rethink a little bit about the design. I don't know if anybody else has any other comment?
No, I do, I, I think that the you can't take the weighted average of a neighboring home that's in the X zone because it has a full basement, it'll have more buildable potential. So I think that if you're looking at, you know, to to base the merit of this application on nearby homes, they have to be something that's built on pilings and also in a flood zone. A neighboring house is clearly an X zone where they're not as constrained. So it's a, it's, it's a skewed comparison to some degree.
I, I don't disagree with that, but to, to some degree, um, what you see from the street and what the streetscape is, and that's what everyone seems to be talking about, are the sizes of the houses that you see from the streetscape. And for those in the streetscape, and what I mean by I suppose the similarity in the neighborhood is that all of Redwood's developed single family residences. I don't think the intention is to say that they're all huge residences, because I know some of them are not, but many of them are. And many of them, as I said, have received relief from both this board and partly irrespective of whether or not it's a waterfront property, irrespective of whether or not it's an X flood zone. Because that's not something that, you know, everyone knows, and it's not something that the average person knows walking down the street.
Great, thank you. I don't, any other comments from the board? Okay, so could I?
Oh, just one quick comment. This is from Alex. Um, and just in defense of the applicant, I want to say, you know, I don't think it's an excessively large McMansion-like house. In another place, I think it would be a perfectly modest house. I think your, the the layout, the room size and so on is perfectly reasonable. But as the others say, and your neighbors say,
You froze. We know where he was going.
Yeah, he's gonna say it's, it's just too big for the lot. That's, that's the issue. It's a, it's, it's, it's a decent sized house, but it's too big for, it's too big for that lot.
Right, great, thank you. So could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Forty-one Redwood Road, twenty-six Cove Road, to the
Uh, the next meeting is November twenty-first.
November twenty-first meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to November twenty-first.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Right. We can take it off the agenda. Uh, yeah, it's been adjourned a number of times. So is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay, could I have um, a motion to take fifty-five Howard Street off the agenda?
I'll make a motion to take it off the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great.
Three sixty-nine Madison Street has requested adjournment to the November twenty-second meeting.
Great, could I have a motion to adjourn three sixty-nine Madison Street to the November twenty-first meeting?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-Lighthouse Lane has offered to adjourn it to the November twenty-first meeting.
Great, could I have a motion to adjourn twenty Lighthouse Lane to the November twenty-first meeting?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next.
Eighty High Street has requested adjournment to the November twenty-first meeting.
Could I have a motion to adjourn eighty High Street to the November twenty-first meeting?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-Lighthouse has requested adjournment to the November twenty-first meeting.
Could I have a motion to adjourn twenty Lighthouse Lane to the November twenty-first meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're at two oh seven Jermaine Avenue.
All right, uh, good evening, just a neighborhood loss.
Great, thank you. You were sworn in.
Yes.
So let's meet, yes. Great.
So at the uh, last month's hearing, I, there were um, three things that uh, went off. one was whether or not we needed some additional variances and if the project needed to be renoticed. My understanding is that the conclusion was that we did not. So.
I do know too about this, right?
No, this is two oh seven Jermaine.
I think we wondered whether it needed to be renoticed to convert the garage to a primary residence.
Yeah, I think that's what it was about.
But we do need to do that.
Yeah, and also I thought I thought this was a preexisting nonconforming dwelling, so as such and you were going to calculate the percentage of expansion. We talked about that.
Yeah, I didn't realize that this.
So that actually has to be noticed.
Okay.
Yeah, and also you have to see, so let me let me just read it for you again. So it's three hundred and twelve point six B, and it's for nonconforming structures to expand them. Um, you you cannot exceed fifty percent of the gross floor area of such building or structure existing on the effective date of this building or structure having become nonconforming, and you have to meet A, B, C, and D. And so B is that the truck and parking requirements are compliant with the three hundred and five point six. C is there's no change in the nature or character of the nonconforming use of buildings or structure. T is the lot coverage and density should not be greater than that would have been permitted by the most restrictive lot coverage and general provisions of the district applicable to the permitted use or special exception use of the same character. The term density includes, among other things, member dwellments, and member uses in the water. That might not bother the rest, might. So you have to look and see what you need variances from, um, and what you don't. And if you need, you can expand it up to fifty percent, you need that exact percentage to notice so that this board can grant that, you know, like, so to three hundred and fifty.
Fine, but it just has never been enforced by ZBA previous, and as you know, I've been doing this for a while, right? So, I mean, I'll obviously I'll I'll do this moving forward, but it is something that hasn't really been uh, by any of the building inspectors.
It was taken out of the code and then it was put back in the code. Remember that since twenty nineteen?
I remember when it was put back in the code, right?
If you look at that whole law. Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah.
It was not my understanding that any of this would come into play unless the expansion was over fifty percent.
No, it's up to, the the board can grant variance up to fifty percent.
So the the question.
So not exceed at all fifty percent of the gross floor.
So does that mean any expansion of a house irrespective of any other variances that they would need? If it's not, if it's nonconforming, the house is already not conforming, it needs variance.
It's a if it's a preexisting nonconforming structure, right?
Yeah.
The use is obviously conforming.
Right.
Then it needs a variance because it's expanding. If you're increasing the degree of nonconformity, and I gave you this information, the degree of increase of the degree of nonconformity is defined in the code as any increase in the nonconformity of a nonconforming building or structure with the dimensional regulations of the chapter. This shall include any increase in nonconformity relating to length, width, height, and nonconforming building structure.
I think we need to have a really serious conversation with the building inspector, with you and the Board of Trustees about this, because if you're interpreting this the way it is, means literally like almost every house in the village
I'm not interpreting it, I'm reading it.
Is gonna need to go to the board, need to get variances.
Yeah.
I mean, even if you're adding a five foot square addition that conforms to setbacks and everything like that, I don't.
That's what the law says, and I'm not interpreting this, I'm just reading it out loud. That's what it says.
I understand that, but just alerting this board that I don't think that was the intent of the law because that means like, as you well know, almost every house in Sag Harbor is nonconforming. So you've got a two thousand square foot house, you just want to add a hundred square foot addition that doesn't require setbacks, doesn't require require pyramids, doesn't require lot coverage relief, most of the big three.
But it's a nonconforming house.
But it's a nonconforming house.
Very simply, you should discuss this separately. If the law needs to be changed, it can be changed, but it's written very simple and a very simple way. As it's written, it's not really subject to interpretation.
Okay.
It may be wrong, but the way it's written is very simple.
It's just it's in the.
I understand, I understand completely what you're saying.
This has never been interpreted that way.
Right.
So, all right.
It's mostly only been applied to commercial things, but it it really is supposed to be applied universally. It's it's been a mistake.
It doesn't distinguish between commercial and residential.
Right, and it's been a mistake that it hasn't been applied in reality.
Limit the expansion of nonconforming structures in the village Sag Harbor.
Right, right.
Originally intended to do.
But we also do need, so we need that percentage, but we also do need to notice the an accessory building becoming a primary uh, structure.
I.
Do we need to notice the principal setbacks?
Yes, because of, well, yes, because a principal is a different setback than.
Notice that chair.
Yeah.
But that was already part of the application.
Not for the garage, because the garage, the original, well, it was not renoticed at this for this meeting, right? So what happened, what happened before was it was not, the garage was not noticed at all because it was there. But in reality, it's not grandfathered as a dwelling. It's grandfathered as an accessory structure.
You need to set back to the garage.
So those setbacks aren't grandfathered for a primary structure.
But if it's converting to a part of the primary structure, and it's the same setbacks as the primary structure, and we're already getting a variance for the primary structure.
It's a different, it's a different variance, because the garage actually is closer to the property line than what than the what you're proposing to build between the house and the garage. That's that's the that's the reason. It's not in a straight line.
Okay.
It it's it's unlikely.
But I'm completely confused because there's, you know, there's a lot of stuff coming up here that.
Well, no, this was discussed at the last. No, this was.
And I did specifically ask whether or not that was the case, and Harry, remember I asked about this, if we need to renotice for the conversion of the garage.
Yes, but we did, we.
I thought that was concluded that we did not.
No, it was concluded that we did.
Okay.
I have.
That's the note that I made to myself. Yes, that we did need to do, and we need to notice the setbacks because they're they're now for a primary structure. It's not it it's, you know, it's there already, so it's not likely that you will be denied those because the building exists already, but it's just it's a formality.
Right, I understand it's a formality, but I just, I wish I had known that a few weeks ago, so.
Well, we did, it was addressed at the last meeting.
Well, I know we talked about it, but I need to renotice, I mean, I need an actual notice, I need something to set out, right?
We, yes, we don't, but we don't do that, we don't do that.
I I don't know, you know, I don't know.
We need the actual percentages too, so we need to know what you need variances for.
Um, so aside from those two things, is there anything else that in regard to this project that needs to be addressed? The accessory building becoming uh, primary and its setbacks, becoming primary setbacks. Um, you've already done the pyramid.
Yeah.
Liz, does the pyramid?
Coverage percentage, is that on here? Thirty percent, it's three hundred and nine point one four N. Compared to, um, thirty percent, you're in one block coverage, so that has to be on your survey as well. And we need to, we need to notice it in a few minutes.
So because you're, the way that Chris is interpreting the the corner lots now, you have front yards and rear yards, no side yards. So we have two rear yards, one behind the house to the neighbor, one way and one behind the house to the neighbor the other way. So Liz, does does the garage need pyramid variances, or is it because it's an existing structure?
Well, I had the pyramid.
Yes, it's for the.
No, 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 it's no new, new, as as new proposed. I I know you've got the pyramid for the the adjoining between the house and the garage. You've got pyramid for that.
Right.
So I'm just asking because you're switching from an accessory to a primary, does that require pyramid variance? I don't, that I don't know. What do you think?
It's a preexisting nonconforming structure. So the the in-between section, your parentheses, which you're filling in, the red portion, that requires pyramid, which we know.
Right.
However, this preexisting garage, because it it's it's a good point, but it's sort of a tricky question because it's there and it's not, there's no you're not introducing something new, so that term is between where the law applies.
Is that an okay interpretation, Liz?
It's a nonconforming uh, structure devoted to a conforming use may be enlarged, reconstructed, altered, restored, or in whole or in part, except the degree of nonconformity shall not increase.
Okay, so we don't need to do that, that. Then we don't need to. Yeah, that's okay, okay, so all all we need are the setbacks.
Just have one.
That thing.
Um, did we ask that they propose what the screening for the pool would be?
Yes, we did ask that. We asked for some sort of plan in terms of the screening between the pool and the street. Uh, because you would eventually need it for the ARB, so that we did ask for also.
You know, one of our asks is, is there a negative effect to the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera? So even though screening is will be absolutely required at the Architectural Review Board, it does go to that paragraph where we're trying to judge is there a negative effect? So if the pool is screened, there isn't probably, but if it's not, it's a very busy street with a pool right out in the middle of everything, and that's often thought undesirable.
And we we did talk about that at the last, at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So.
We thought that you might want to specify what it would be rather than have us do it arbitrarily in a decision.
Right.
As a requirement.
I mean, that's easy enough to do, I'm probably more concerned about these.
I understand, I just didn't want to let it slip away. I'd be wanting to come back again a month from now and then bring it up then, that's all.
So, um, are you're you're clear, everybody's clear on what needs to happen?
Frankly, I'm still not totally clear, so.
I emailed you this earlier today.
Yeah, I I thought it was just.
It's also stated on the record in the last.
Well, but but some of this is new and I didn't believe it, I don't believe it came up at the last.
It did, it's in the record, but we can talk about it further.
Great, so could, do you have any more questions, Anthony, or you're confused or not?
I mean, I guess it's meaningless at this point, but I did get a letter from the neighbor in favor of.
Yes, we did see that. Yes, thank you. That was good. So I think that, I mean, just for your information, I think that in general, the board was pretty much in favor of your proposal. It's really just a matter of um, getting all of the ducks in a row. I don't know if anybody has any comments about.
That was our sense at the last.
Yeah, it's it's just
we just want it done correctly, but our, I think our sympathies were, you know, were with the plan.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. So could I have a motion to adjourn two seven Jermaine Avenue to the November twenty first meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now we're going to move on to new business, and the first one is twenty eight Jefferson. Thank you. Um, before, while we're doing this, are all of you going to speak?
Um, yes.
Okay, could you come to the, we'll just get this out of the way. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, William Cummings, one thirty eighty South Vindaloo Road.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. Are are you an attorney or a?
No.
Are, okay, could you state your name and address for the record? Great, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one second, I didn't hear his name.
Could you repeat your name, I'm sorry?
John White.
Thank you.
Great, and just remember that the microphone is above you. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Katie Frank from Creighton, DC at two seven nine eighty three.
Right, you're the attorney.
I am not.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you. So you may proceed.
Applicant is going to store, store and hold, and included in that restoration is a renovation, a lot of a lot of twenty eight Jeffersons is a little over five thousand square feet, and R twenty zone with four nodes, upper minimum of twenty thousand square feet. Also one corner lot, subjected to health. The house, yeah, health is also nonconforming in some areas, I guess, close to three feet to property one. This house has a contributing dwelling in the village, built on a thoroughly aging coverage, and historic homes do not restore themselves. The house is currently in the repair unless someone makes a kind of expense to restore the home, the village will be losing one of its resources. So applicants here, they need to restore historic homes that are continuing to contribute to the community for the next couple of years. According to the National Restaurant Expert's, the house was estimated to have been constructed in eighteen twenty eight, but since then, it's undergone several additions, creating sections that are on and have rights, especially on the eastern side of the street. In fact, applicant went front of the ARB, asked people proposing as a discussion item to get the board's feedback on the project, and the board said they thought it was a great opportunity and to fix some of the odd parts of the house. Additionally, they appreciated applicant effort to restore the front door. In addition to feedback from the ARB, they requested applicant make three changes, all of which applicant has made, and this application represents those changes. Now for the list of variances. So they they are moving, I'm going to go in order of how these are made to propose renovations and structures. So first, I'd like to start with the variances regarding the house. So first, before those, we're requesting pyramid intrusion of seven hundred and eighty seven cubic feet, where a view is permitted, therefore, release of fifty seven seven cubic feet. First four additions with a front yard setback of fourteen point three feet, where twenty feet is required, so release of five point seven feet. A former addition with a front yard setback of twelve feet, where twenty feet is required, therefore, release in the amount of eight feet. A window well with a front yard setback of eight feet, where twenty feet is required, so release of twelve feet. A basement degress stairs with a side yard setback of three, where ten feet is required, so release of seven is required. An outdoor kitchen with side yard setback of three feet, where ten feet is required, therefore, seeking release of seven feet. And expansion will create this nonconforming structure below the fifty percent of the GFA. I am estimating that I will get that, but I believe it's five point three percent increase in GFA. Regarding the pool, applicant will need three variances, first side yard setback of ten feet, a rear yard setback of twelve point seven feet, and a front yard setback of thirty two point four feet, all of which require a minimum of thirty five feet, I'm sorry, fifteen feet. Lastly, the accessory items on the premises, the AC units are proposed as a setback of nine feet, where twenty feet is required, and retaining wall of one foot, where three feet is required. At this time, I'd like to go into the balancing test. So we believe that granting of the requested variances will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will it create a deficit to nearby properties. In fact, the proposed work will improve the neighborhood by restoring a beautiful historic home located in that story district. And many of the improvements will not be visible on the street or neighboring properties due to the proposed land saving, which we have submitted to the, to the board. And to the extent that the improvements are visible from the neighboring properties or the street, we submit that these are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. We also believe that the benefit cannot be sought by some other asset. As stated, you see, it's a very undersized lot. It's about a quarter of the minimum requirement for R twenty, and it's a corner lot, so it's very restrictive in addition to the existing. and it's a corner lot, so it's very restrictive. In addition to the existing structures located on the premises, really any improvement or addition from that flyer, some sort of. Whether it's being a variance substantial, while we know a dozen variance, it sounds like a lot. Looking at the fact and the circumstances and considering the whole of what applicant is requesting, we don't think that it is that significant. And to the extent it is, it is mitigated by the proposed vegetation and the fact that the restoration is going to be modified. What are going to add respect on the physical or environmental conditions? We are actually reducing zoning coverage, the full, sorry, full coverage from 52.8% to 49.1%. And applicant is removing the existing sanitary system, which is a state of failure and replacing the highest, though there will actually be an improvement to the environmental condition. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created or technically it was, because the zoning law did not change in the past year to purchase the property, the self-created hardship is not dispositive and does not prove the granting of the rest of the. I am joined here tonight with, uh, by Bill Cummings and John Leonard, architect and designer. If you have any questions at this time, we would be happy to ask about them. We would also be happy, if you have full-size photo, could walk us through.
I think you should walk us through what you're actually proposing to do to the house. Because it's a little bit confusing to tell what's new and old. Right.
Should we pull this out some of it?
And Damon and Alex, can you see?
Uh, Bill is right in my way, unfortunately.
Now you can see?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, yes, it would be helpful for us to know exactly what you're proposing to do. So you can show us what's existing and versus what, how you're changing it, what you're adding on.
I'm going to start with the elevation.
How you're altering the existing house.
Yeah, so this is how the house is existing currently up here. Down below, we have illustrated the house as what the changes would be. Uh, we are looking to restore the front entrance way, not that it requires any variances, but we are restoring that to be back to what we believe was period, period correct. Uh, we also are, there's a window there. We are adding a, changing that window to a door. Uh, you can see here, this is further back and I can illustrate on the side elevation. But this is on a cantilever on the second floor that is existing, and it just cantilevers over. And what we're looking to do is take that, this hatched in area, is that's the fill-in spot below. So just fill in what is down underneath this part that's already cantilevered. And I get to this elevation here, this is Suffolk, Suffolk Street. Uh, what we're looking to do here is, this elevation remains pretty much the same. There is a dormer that is being added to the roof line right on, onto the back of there for headroom to that, to that space as well as we reverse from the main part of the house onto that link there. It just gives you the proper headroom to get there. Right here is, this is all a covered porch, and this portion of the covered porch, which is being built out inside to leaving the roof and structure, we're not looking to make the space itself any bigger, but to enclose that portion of the covered porch, just for, just for towels. And we get to the rear elevations here. You can see, this is the dormer that I was just talking about, that was on Suffolk Street there, that was coming across. And then on this portion right now, this second floor that projects out in here, in the background, is that other part that we're building underneath. We're looking to just take, take that space and fill in, and it's actually be better if I could show you in, oh, here you go. So here's that part that cantilevers out and cantilevers below. We're taking that space and filling in right there. That would just be a small portion that would be filled in. That's illustrating what's being built below.
The last, sorry, interrupt. The last photo and the packets of photos that I see you represent, which is our cantilevered portion of the property, which is the same portion that the ARB commented would be a great opportunity to renovate.
And then, um, what, you've got other things going on, on the site plan? Maybe you could run through those?
Yeah. Yeah, so what we're proposing here, and you can see in these renderings, this is how we propose it will exist. You'll see along the Suffolk roadside, we plan to hedge that whole side up to, up to the front of the house. Uh, there is a pre-existing, uh, what is that called? It's a smoke bush that the ARB was particularly interested in maintaining. And you see it's, it's represented in there. So our intentions are to take care of that particular bush and hedge this whole side of the property with, um, with osmanthus, this whole way. The front of the property, we plan to, uh, keep open as is, to establish a small ticket fence in front of the property, keeping two pre-existing cherry trees there, but making it open to the street on that side. Uh, we have the driveway, which is pre-existing here, and plan to hedge towards the neighbor with the osmanthus on the front of the property here. And, and then around the house itself with boxwoods up to the house, this will screen a pre-existing garbage bin and, um, the air conditioning unit. Uh, then on the back of the property here, uh, we're proposing emerald green hedging all the way on that whole side of the property, the screen there. They would be 10 to 12 feet. And then on the backside of the property, we're proposing, um, our providing, along the whole backside there, around the proposed swimming pool, we plan to do a small hard surface patio, but the rest in gravel, the pool. And, uh, yeah, that's, and in the front, there'll be low ground cover in the front.
So could you also address the, the patios and the retaining walls, those other site items?
The one setback for the retaining wall is here, there is a pre-existing hard surface patio on this side of the house. We're proposing a two-foot, um, variance relief, um, to enlarge that patio slightly because it's quite a constrained area.
But you're actually raising the patio.
We are raising the patio.
Right, so that's something to take into consideration, not just a retaining wall, it's a raised patio. Okay.
And this is the proposed outdoor kitchen here.
And then in the back, the swimming pool is at grade?
At grade, yes.
Okay. So that, the kitchen that runs across there consists of?
Uh, a grill and shelves.
Shelves.
Uh, yeah.
So one thing that, um, I noticed and had been pointed out to us is that in some cases, the staircases on the architectural drawings don't match the staircases on the survey.
The egress staircase or?
Well, yeah, well, that one by the swimming pool to start off with is different on the survey than it is on the architectural drawings.
Okay.
So there are some discrepancies that need to be worked out. I don't know.
Yeah, if they're different, we will look into that and address that and make sure.
I guess the other thing is because the site is so, have you had a, a septic system designed for the site?
Yes.
So is this the actual design system shown on the survey?
It's replacing, so the existing fail system is, and then in fact, we are showing right, right, right.
Right, but this is the, this is the, the engineered design for this. Okay. Okay.
From the.
Oh, the health department permit already. Okay, great. And do any board members have questions, comments?
Not yet. Just, it's a very challenged lot, obviously, especially to be squeezing a swimming pool into. There's a lot going on here, and it takes a lot of, uh, reviewing. And, uh, it is, it is a difficult thing to determine exactly. So I have to review this a little bit more.
Yeah, it's very complicated with the, with the additions and cantilever and the, kind of the hatcher and the back for the small part. I understand the difficulty of looking down the stairs and seeing exactly what is proposed. Because in some areas, we are filling in under cantilever, and in some areas, we are building up with dormers, but keeping the footprint. And I would like to bring the attention to the fact that we are only increasing the GFA of this structure by 126 square feet, which is a very modest addition.
So the only, the only foot, where is the footprint addition? Is that only under the cantilever? Where, where are you actually adding on to the footprint of the house? Just under the cantilever?
Well, under the cantilever, which is here, we're also adding that.
Right, but that's already, yeah, but it's already, that's, that's already covered.
Without a foundation.
Right. So maybe you could also run through the pyramid diagrams? That would be great. So the bulk of the pyramid, um, is really on one side facing, uh, the Ganon property, correct?
Underneath one of these.
So what we've done here is the areas that are in red is all the ARB, an additional space that's above and beyond, which currently bears CO. So we have this little sliver here, then we have this dormer, uh, which we're adding there. And then when this, uh, when that gable has been created for that space, that ridge comes up a little bit in height, so it's the length of that ridge. Come along here. You can see this is actually from the.
Oh, probably.
From the rear side of the house. And there's that, there is that dormer. And then this is that other space that's on the face of the wood we were pulling. Which is right here. That, and that is the same spot. And then that's that ridge again there.
Alex and Damon, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I don't, I don't have the prints that he's showing there, so, and I've actually went, gone to the house twice. So I'd like to get those, uh, all those diagrams, all those, uh, prints and go back and take a look, because it's, like I said, there's, there's an awful lot going on. Um, and again, I also agree, you know, trying to shove a pool on that lot that really has no, uh, no drainage, once you, you know, put a pool on there is, is, it's a little tight. So those are my, my observations.
Um, that raises, does raise another point. We would want you to show, um, uh, dry well locations for all the roof runoff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott, my, my comments are, uh, similar to Damon's, which are that, without the kind of drawings in front of me, it's hard to properly assess. It's hard to see these kind of via zoom at a distance. Um, and there is obviously a lot going on, uh, being proposed with this, uh, project. So I don't have any questions at the moment, but I'd like to reserve the ability to come back in the next meeting and ask more specific questions. But, um, comments are similar as, as Damon.
I would add to that, Alex, I did not receive the green color code drawings.
Right.
They were submitted to the village with our initial.
They could have been, but not my packet, but I'm familiar with the house and I, I have looked at it, but I think my a point to be, uh, an earlier applicant, when any building permit is made, it's done with quarter inch scale drawings and floor plans and cross-sections for building inspector to respond with the, uh, he's going to give you just a letter of denial. We use that, I in particular use that to get a sense of scale of the structure. I can get a sense of this, but it's very difficult to do so unless I put a quarter inch scale on the plan. Just for my own edification, what does this variance look like? Did the applicant do it correctly? And we go through that. Not that we don't trust people, but I need to do that so I can respond to you in a sensible manner and helpful manner. So, um, as Dr. Rollby pointed out, we have many variances here. Um, one that sticks out, uh, for me in particular is the GFA. I have a question for the architect. Why is it 5.7 square feet over? Is that, uh, how did you measure or convert that number that you discovered here above?
Oh, we're not, we're not.
I thought you were asking for mine or GFA. It's a, okay, so you're good with that.
We are under the.
Okay. There was, there's such a litany, I started to write down as you went through. I'm generally okay with the, uh, window well. It's a benign request, but there's a lot to think about here. And, um, last question I had was the septic and the intent of the retaining wall. Why, why is that wall being introduced?
It's the wall on the opposite side of the property.
Yeah, it's to raise the patio.
It was actually just to raise the patio, so it's near the floor level of kitchen, so when you step out. So it's, uh, accessibility. It has nothing to do with the septic.
All right. I, I won't comment further. Um, chairman had observed, or I thought I'd heard, site plan. It looks like there's a lot of coverage here happening on a 5,000 square foot parcel. But the rest, I would feel, I would benefit from having quarter inch scale plans to look at, to respond in a, in an appropriate manner to your request.
I mean, I think it would be good to consider reducing the size of the pool and eliminating some of the pool variance. Because that's, you know, it's a, it's a tiny parcel, and it's a fairly big pool for such a tiny parcel.
That's up onto two neighbors as well.
It's, it's, you know, adjacent to two neighbors.
A variance offer, yeah.
There's, you know, lots of noise associated with that. So just in terms of the GFA stuff, they're at 24, uh, 2494, and they're allowed 2,500. So they're just under, they're just under.
So the, it must be the increase, it's a percent. So the must be the increase, it's a percentage increase then to, I think it was number seven on your list of.
It's a 50% roll.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Because they're only increasing by 100 something square feet. If there's anything, yes, do you have something to add?
I just back to the pool. So we're proposing setbacks for the pool. A side yard setback of 10 feet, a rear yard setback of 12.7 feet and a front yard setback of 32.4 feet. We are renoticing that because I.
It's also not the pool that setback for the pool is not noted on the survey.
Yes, we are going to be renoticing that with the specific markings on the on the survey with the board.
Yeah, but they're going this way.
A bit more direction when you say smaller pool. I know that the village has recently, you know, granted variances for as little as 5.1 feet from side yards. And we are proposing where we have 12.7 from the rear and 10 feet from the side. So I was hoping.
Well, the 10 feet is, you know, 30%, 33%. That's a big variance. And the house, you know, the house next to you is not conforming as to setback from the side yard too. So the pool ends up extremely close to that house next door.
There's a lot of.
Coals are noisy.
Yeah, but we are proposing screening and a lot of vegetation.
Yeah, except that vegetation doesn't do anything to mitigate sound. You really need something solid to do that.
Fencing as well.
Right.
Fencing towards all the neighbors.
If we were to propose like a solid fence, would that address?
A fence doesn't really do it either. Well, they can be they can be sound absorbing. It depends on what the fence.
I have pools surrounding my house. Yeah, they're 30 or 40 feet away. They're extremely noisy. I'd like to see no pool.
So other than the pool and the raised patio, I just want to get as much input from the board while we're here.
Should we go through each of these items? We could go through. We can go through each of the.
In other words, and not do it next time. Do you have any letters from the neighbors concerning this?
Did we see one from? I can't remember from the Gannon residence. No.
I only have one letter.
I have a letter from.
I have a couple of cameos.
So is it five and 12? So what while Carrie is doing that, why don't we see if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak to this?
Three letters in deposition and received one letter from two letters. A few times a letter from. The three letters not from one property?
Yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address 28 Jefferson?
The only one I saw was.
Is there anyone online?
Yeah, there's someone from the.
I sent two letters.
Right. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Susan made a raise my right hand.
Do you swear to tell the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth? Oh, great. Thank you.
I submitted one general comment and then one specific.
Right.
And I'd like to correct on the specific on number eight. Were three feet before and not one. And I have a couple of questions if I could ask the board first because I found these plans very difficult to read. I would love to know what's already not conforming on this property. And I think there are a lot of current considerations nonconforming. So the mistake that the Gannon variance is 787 cubic feet. To me, the applicant want all of the current nonconforming aspects of the house made conforming by this application in addition to their new requests. So.
Well, yes, but the the existing nonconforming is sort of grandfathered. But we very often do ask applicants to submit a calculation of what is existing that's conforming and nonconforming. So that we can see how much nonconformity there already exists on the property. So so we could have the applicant address that. Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, there's three of these that I had no problem with as long as there's adequate screening. And that's the window well in the front yard will leave the 12 feet of the other will need to be screened. And the other was the AC units. That's relief number three on his list of variances. That needs to be screened, but there's little space for those AC units. And then the pool, the problem with the pool is if you reduce the side yard setback variance unless you completely move it, the pool is too thin. And then there's the 15 foot long pool, which is like a 15. I have one more question for the board and then I'll let my letter be what it is. I would like to have separable plans that would be most helpful. And if the side yard, if there's two, if there's a side yard and a rear yard, it would be great just to have those designated. Or if the building official is now creating, now two even as two rear yards, that would be of interest because that changes what the setback rules are.
Right. So at the moment, I believe the interpretation is that the street sides are the front yards and the two adjacent properties would be rear yards.
So instead of designating the Gannon property as a side yard, it should be another rear yard.
It's actually a rear yard, yes. That's 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 what he was doing for a while. I'm not sure if he's still doing it that way. Yeah.
Okay.
Because we used to consider it differently, but Chris in reread the definitions and decided that the previous interpretation was incorrect. And that corner lots would not have any side yards, but only front and rear yards. So it's a that's the current interpretation. As far as I know.
All the nonconforming shown that currently exists and then also our dissection of the variances to.
Yeah, it most likely. Yes, great. Thank you. Anyone else from the public to speak? Is there anyone online, Carrie? Great. Could you state your name and address?
My name is the Lord Jermaine 36 Jefferson.
Great. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not an immediate neighbor, but there's a question about raising that roof you know, to the same height as, you know, the actually the original house is at. I think that's totally wrong. And I don't quite understand the initiation by the president of first. He said in order to say the star asset from the house, we have to actually destroy the appearance of the house. You know, this is really ARB question, but can that could be raised to that height? And also thought out first for the Gannon property.
Yeah, I mean, it would require a variance to do that, correct?
Yeah, but do the variance, you know, do the rules say, oh, yes, they can do that.
It they cannot do it unless this board grants them a variance to do it, correct?
Also, there's I don't quite understand the reason for the outdoor kitchen. You know, that would only create noise in the area. You know, they have a they actually have a brick, you know, just put a little sketch down and have it there. And not, you know, sitting above and be adjacent to the Gannon property. It seems wrong. And it could be also loud. Noise will be created. And I just think all the variances, anything at all, the house should destroy the raw art of the or current additions and restore the house to what it should look like without raising the roof. And that would be a beautiful, thick, sad one. Okay, so I.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? Do any of the board members have more comments or questions do you want to respond to?
Quickly, your site plan, if it could, although we have setback or distances located on the survey to the testimony which Miss Meade gave, if this site plan could show setbacks. The idea was the roadside and also rear yard setback, how that relates and.
Very often they just dotted.
Yeah, just a red dotted line or whatever. That would be helpful. Thank you.
And then right, yeah. And then I it would be good for the board to know what the percentage of nonconformity in terms of the pyramid law is already existing. Because usually a comparison that we do.
So the existing encroachment is 4,104 cubic feet.
Okay, can you those supplies with a diagram?
Yeah. Yeah. And overall, I would like to say that we disagree with what I said. But specifically, I want to address two items. We foiled the building file and I was not able to locate any prior variances for this property. It's not saying they don't exist. It was not implied to us on a foil request. Additionally, the roof line that we are proposing, we are not proposing to match. Let's make that clear. You just the board understand that in elevation, but we are not seeking to do that. Nonetheless, applicant wants to be a good neighbor, we will take into consideration.
So maybe we should we'll just run through quickly the the points just to get a reading from the board. So you have some. So the first thing is the window well. I'm fine with the concept of the window well. It's screened. Okay, just.
Yes.
Okay. The AC units, I think the location for them is probably the best place because they're on the street. Not making noise for a neighbor. How the board members feel about that?
And and there's one already there already.
Right, right. Then the next one down is the west. So the the setback from the Suffolk Street side for that proposed enclosed porch area. I don't know how people feel about enclosing part of that court, the existing porch, which creates a new setback from, I mean, it's an existing structure being enclosed.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Within more or less within the existing.
Okay, and what about the the dormer adjacent to that on the second floor? That small dormer? Maybe you could.
It looks out on the street. It's not a yeah, not a problem for neighbors.
Yeah, that's that's sheet is or whichever sheet shows the the one we forward, I think. It's there, right there on the left. You can just it's that left to the left side of the left one. It's yeah, that everyone. Does anyone have any comment about that small dormer?
No, it seems pretty modest to me.
Okay.
That's on the.
That's on the.
So it overlooks the streets and a neighbor.
Right, right. Have the basement egress steps. And there's a that's where there's sort of a discrepancy between the floor plans and the survey. They're sort of a benign entity.
That's the way it strikes me. It's more or less within the confines of the house.
I think this is the basement egress here. The basement egress is next to the swimming pool, correct?
Right next to the pool.
Right, right there. Yeah. The outdoor kitchen, I don't know. I have reservations about the outdoor kitchen concept.
One sec, back to the basements, the stairs. Those are the stairs that don't show the same on some of the prints, right?
Correct. Yep, that's correct. They're adjacent to the the swimming pool. So that could be addressed. And then.
Some of these next time, only because she's giving you a really high block.
Right, right. Yes, yeah. No, we're just trying to give them some concept of where we're thinking. I don't I'm not crazy about the kitchen.
I'm concerned because it's so close to the neighbor. This house is also so close to that. Right.
Yeah, if I recall, there have been applications where patio has not been approved within 10 feet of a side yard. Depending on level noise which they make in the kitchen. Because the testimony we heard from this gentleman, they make noise.
Yeah, and I know that it seems to me that where there was one proposed in Redwood that we denied, if you remember.
Yeah.
Yes, it was very close to the property line. So that's something for you guys to think about. The raised patio concept with the retaining wall. I'm not too crazy about that being so close to the property line.
Brick patio to remain. So I don't feel that that's an increase to the use. It's the kitchen is a component of that. I'm okay with the patio.
It will be raised.
Being raised. How much is it raised? Two feet to be at the same level as the kitchen?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's something to think about. And then we get to the pool.
So my concern with the raised patio would be the neighbors that their house is so close to that. I'm just sending this out if there's another way to address it.
Something for you to think about. The swimming pool, I think, I think could be smaller. I don't know. You think it could be eliminated? What do other people think? Something to address.
At least smaller, at least.
Could somebody remind me what the current size of the proposed pool is? What is it?
10 by 18.
10 by 15?
10 by 18.
And then the last one is the total pyramid. The bulk of the pyramid, though, is is basically on the Gannon side. So I don't know if there are ways that you can think of to reduce that exposure. Just because the bulk of it's on that one side. I don't know how the people feel.
I would benefit from taking a look at the drawing. Because we received this, these are reduced scale. However, with a 5,000 square foot lot, you're filling in light and space over a one story ingredient. It's adding volume to the house, which could adversely impact a neighbor. Meaning the Gannon property. So we feel like that's something that needs. Meaning the gannon property, so we feel like that's something that needs further consideration, it needs more time to give you a thoughtful response on that.
Anybody else have any more comments?
I have one question, I couldn't understand the roof going to be raised or I thought it was because it's existing, we don't have.
No, it's at least. If you look at this, if you come up and look at this diagram, it's it's lower. Maybe you can take the diagram to him. But it's lower. Does anybody on the board have any more comments or questions? Do you guys have anything else? For us tonight? No, okay, great, could I have a motion to adjourn? Twenty eight. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Hey Scott?
Yes?
Can I just make a suggestion, which is I'm very sympathetic with the Zoom audience being one now? Is there any way you guys can shut off your mic except when you're speaking?
No.
The paper is incredibly loud.
Yes, we realize that's a prob, can you guys take your discussion? Thank you, um, yes, we realize it's a problem, unfortunately, the system, once you shut down our mics, you shut down all the mics.
Oh, I see.
It's not separated out, we've run into this before, sorry, we'll try to keep the paper shuffling. Great. Uh, next on the agenda is two two six Main Street. Great.
Motion to open.
Yes, could I have a motion to open two twenty six Main Street?
I'll make a motion to open.
One second.
All in favor? Great, could you state your team and address for the record? Great, could you raise your right hand, just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
The owner of two two six Main Street, the premises is privately undergoing negotiations and applicant is seeking to move the existing pool closer to the to the primary residence and construct a new pool house. The proposed backyard setback of pool house, the proposed the end required, there's already enough twenty four to accommodate this period. Additionally, the rear yard coverage is forty one hundred and five, it is reduced from the existing forty three point eight six. permitted, so even though we are going to reduce the coverage. As far as the balancing factors, the existing compound is taking out, reducing the requested variance, more will create adjustments to the neighborhood property. The proposed pool house will be screened in the row and neighboring properties by two major vegetation located on the premises. Additionally, along with the proposed pool house, we have been also proposing to move the pool closer to the house, further from the northern property line, which will benefit the neighboring property.
See that gray line? That's the.
When I look around there.
This is the only thing in the.
Is there now?
No, this gray line here, great, that's the existing.
I couldn't see over that.
I was giving a moment to just speak and I'll finish.
Sure, great, thank you.
So the requested variance is substantial, we do recognize that, but it's due in part to the fact that it's a corner lot, subject to two front yards. We believe that the requested relief is imminent on this period to achieve the benefits sought by the applicant. And additionally, there is an approximate ten foot grass buffer from the property line to the entrance of payment. I have photos which I'll hand out, but visually, it's not going to appear that the pool house is ten feet from the property, it's going to appear as if it's twenty two, so to the extent it's substantial, we believe it's mitigated by those factors. Advocate's proposed improvements will not have an adverse effect on the impact of the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And in fact, the proposed project will decrease the total lot cover by eight square feet. And we are proposing a new ID septic system. And even though technically the difficulty is self-created because the property only retained a title to the premises during the current zoning regulations, uh, a self-created hardship is not evident, it's not the huge grand request or fair request. We do have some photos I would like to hand out to the court. So there is mature thick vegetation on the property line, so these photos are from Howard Street and angle from the neighbor's property, you can take it from the prophecy and standing there to the vegetation, you can't see. So the pool house will not be. I'm joined here tonight, Dan, our architect, are happy to answer any questions.
The only difficulty I had, I could not get to the back of the house to see.
Yeah, it's a tricky site right now.
Yes, and the fencing and I could not determine if this was an existing pool.
There is an existing.
Existing pool and the new pool, so.
Yeah, so there's an existing.
I think that we should have access to to visualize, it was it was locked and.
Well, we have a site visit scheduled, A or B, at twelve thirty this Friday. And if any of the board members are available.
You can get there, what you have to do is, at the top of the gate, if you reach over it, there's a little thing to pull up that unlocks the pool gate. And then you have to pull the string on the front at the same time, and then the gate will open towards you. Because I got in today.
But the pool's not.
I should have gone with you, pool's not up for a variance.
And the pool's not. Pool's not, the pool is not up for a variance. No. Okay, doesn't have, pool doesn't have anything to do with what they're here before.
But you can't, you can get there, you just have to pull the two things at once. I would just make.
This does need to have a notice for an accessory structure in the front yard.
Right, and we were also noticing that the the the, there's a front yard setback, but there's also then a rear yard setback. Variance, correct?
Eleven point five.
Right. That's, it's a fifteen, correct, because it's associated with a pool?
Yes. The rear yard?
Well, you've got two front yards and two rear yards, is the way that the building inspector interprets these things. So the eleven.
Yeah, present at ten from the rear yard, accessory structure?
Well, yes, but things associated with a pool become fifteen. So maybe pool houses aren't, I don't know, Val, do you have uh experience with that in terms of a pool? Is it just accessory or is it considered a pool accessory?
A pool house cannot exceed two hundred square feet.
Right.
If it had, so this is an accessory structure by definition, it it's not a cabana. Although it is adjacent to a pool, it just happens to be an accessory structure that's adjacent to an in-ground pool, so as.
So it'll just be ten feet then. Right, it's, yes, it's right under, it's ten feet, ten feet, so that one's fine. But we do have to get the variance for an accessory structure in the front yard.
I would just make an observation that when we do grant variances setbacks from front yards that are facing another street, we often at least want it to meet the variance it would be if it were a rear yard, in other words, fifteen feet. So we're.
Well, an accessory. Yeah, an accessory is ten, yeah. Okay, so this is wrong.
It says thirty five feet. From the front here, this this.
It should be this, this, yeah, yeah. For the front yards.
In the front yard. It should be thirty five feet, right.
That's what I'm referring to. So if we do grant variances for that, which sometimes we do, we at least like it to be what it would be if it were a side yard, which is fifteen feet. Is that my making sense? It's not, I'm not.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
That makes sense, makes sense to me.
Lifted the precedent, we've said, well, if we're gonna. Yeah, we at least like to grant the variance and make it based on fifteen feet, which this would have trouble doing.
Oh, to essentially treat it as a side yard, is that right?
If you look back at the precedent, when we have granted variances for this kind of thing, where it's a you know, it's a side yard sort of artificially because it's facing the street, then we at least like to be able to say to ourselves and to the public that we've granted the same variance we would grant as if this were a side yard. So the way it reads now, it needs a variance of seventy percent, which is a, you know, quite a large variance. If it were fifteen percent, fifteen feet, it would be thirty three percent, which is still large, but I don't know, is there's any way to to account for that, I'm just making an observation.
We don't have a measurement for the pool before school report.
Yes, you 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 should. Yeah, we we need a measurement. Right, but it's a whole new pool, so it it needs to. I would prefer it if it were farther away from the street person, I don't know what the other board members feel, I think it's.
That's what, that's the point I was, yeah.
Yeah, I I I agree. I won't, it's only an extra four point three feet. But I just, I was agreeing with you, Tim, and I was just saying, it's only an extra four point three feet, if they moved it four point three feet roughly towards the pool, the the problem would be, you know.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I don't know what a solution would be, I was just making the observation that if you look back at the precedent, when we have granted those variances of that sort, it's been based on giving, granting the variance from what it would be if it were a side yard. Does the um, the porch, given that it's got a brick and permeable surface count as part of the of the whole, of the.
Well, it's in lock coverage, but I don't believe because it's enclosed, it's not part of, well, I don't know, that's an interpretation that it's not part of the two hundred square foot requirement. I don't know.
It bears with a structural setback because it's roofed.
Right.
It doesn't contribute to the aggregate square footage of the building because.
I meant more in terms of the setback.
Yeah, setback wise, it needs to meet the setback because it's a structure.
That's that's my only comment, just.
Right, and that's the, that's the one that's noticed, the ten point.
But to mitigate what I was saying, it it is unusual in that there is eight to ten feet of grass to, before you get to the street, and there's no sidewalk along there either. You know what I'm saying, and this is village land, so it's not. So it's a little unusual, you, often the property line is kind of, maybe there's a sidewalk there and the property line's kind of right on the sidewalk or whatever, so this if if we were to write a decision granting this, it might be mitigated. That is wider than it looks on that picture.
Yes.
It is, it is a good eight to ten feet. So there is a sense that you could add that to what the setback is. If you're thinking the setback, not not by the code, but just by the way people would experience it. You're you're eighteen feet away or twen- even twenty feet away from that pool house from the closest point you'd see it walking down Howard Street.
I I might add to your public, looking at the mass of this building, which is a mushroom-shaped roof, it bears with minimal impact in terms of the visual, but the uniqueness of this application is exactly what Tim stated, is that there's a wall of three or eight plus vegetation, roadside vegetation, which gives the illusion more buffer.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that hedge vegetation falls off in the winter, this is not year-round evergreen.
Well, this is very, it's a double row, and if you walk around the village, there are some like weaker privates, this is very mature and substantial, even compared to other privates in the area.
In the winter, though, will be more visible.
I just wondered if we wanted to replace it with the.
Well, there could be more screening.
Evergreen screen.
Could be screening on the other side.
Also, you will be able to see this from the street.
Right, it's taller.
Fourteen feet, are we okay with that?
Here with a lot of mess.
Oh, but you met, but it's, that's what's going to sit right behind that hedge, if you look at. You'll see the roof. So the hedge is eight feet and that's fourteen feet, so it's gonna stick up six feet above that.
Applicant is willing to install additional screening, Hall are writing in that area to get additional screening.
It could be on the the pool side of the hedge.
It's a good thing.
Ham, do you have any other?
No, I don't have nothing else.
Damon, do you? Alex, do you have any comments?
Well, I guess there's a question for the applicant, which is, you know, would there be openness to moving the pool house a little closer to the pool to meet the fifteen yard, uh, sorry, fifteen feet setbacks on on either side? Just just curious if the applicants open that possibility.
Yes, we will definitely address that with the applicant.
I don't know where you could put it.
Need to nail down the required distance between the swimming pool and the pool house, we had previously understood that it was required ten feet, but I think now it's.
Yeah, now there's, you're right, well, yes.
So with that, to join board and see how.
Great, is there anyone from the public that wants to address two twenty six Main Street? Yeah, you have to step forward.
Hi, my name is Mimi, this morning, I live in the village on one three three seven Bridge Road, and I.
Great, can you raise your right hand, just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
And I am this project's project manager, so what I think is noteworthy is that we talk to the neighbor, direct neighbor to the right, and they are completely, you know, I mean, they are supporting this, this ask, so we do believe that the screening that exists and the and the solid wood fencing completely, you know, screens it from the street.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Not to hate, though.
So, um the fencing is along the, is from the house to the street, not along the property line, correct? I mean, the solid wood fencing, I didn't notice any fencing, yes. There's solid wood fencing. But a- along the private, let's say, there's not, it's a wire fence and that was, right, okay, that's right. So does anyone else have any other comments or? Okay, so what we'll do is, I guess, it needs to be renoticed for these couple of the things, and you can think about some of the comments. And we'll adjourn it to the uh, November twenty first meeting, could I have a motion to do that? So, oh, second?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Great, thank you, thank you. Next on the agenda is two twelve Madison Street. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Great, can you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
Okay, so uh, here we are at this house, it's two twelve Madison Street. Okay, so, uh, here we are at this house. It's two twelve Madison Street.
Uh, I'm sorry, I did not. May I have a motion to open the public hearing for two hundred twelve Madison Street?
I'll make a move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
So this house is two twelve Madison Street. It's a fairly small, uh, well, it's a wailing error, uh, house. It is, uh, possibly one and a half stories. There's also an existing, um, ten by ten shed in the rear yard. So what we are going to do is to add an addition to the rear of the south side of the, um, structure, uh, which is a total of a hundred fifty square feet addition, um, and then adding a second floor shed dormer, which is a total of three hundred thirty-five, uh, square foot addition. I guess, uh, any general questions?
So we can just.
Okay, all right, so, um, we feel that this, uh, one hundred forty-nine square footed, one-story addition, three hundred thirty-five, uh, square foot, um, second floor dormer addition is the, uh, least noticeable and most, uh, most appropriate way to expand the house, uh, which is, the set foot very small, fourteen hundred square feet. Even at the new, um, uh, GFA, which will be just under nineteen hundred square feet, uh, the house will still be under, well, under the allowable GFA for the, uh, property as well. And the size of comparable houses in the neighborhood, uh, several which are all being large, you know, house across the street, I would add, is currently in the dormer. Um, the benefits offered by the app, um, applicant is to enlarge the kitchens, which is currently very tiny, um, at a small room, laundry, uh, rooms, the laundry is currently, um, this kind of a mess, um, and then add a, um, second floor, uh, an additional second floor bedroom and bathrooms. They're currently two, uh, two bedrooms in the second floor that will now be. The requested, uh, specifying variance is, uh, nine hundred forty-eight, uh, cubic feet, um, the bulk of which is on the north side of the, uh, house. And that is required to add, um, the second floor, uh, dormer, which is, um, due primarily to the structures, uh, the existing structures proximity to the north, uh, property line. The dormer is, uh, keeping its scale to similar shed dormers throughout, um, Sag Harbor. Uh, the highest point is, uh, twenty-two foot six inches of height and, um, seven feet above the existing first floor, uh, kitchen roof. Um, I think that's actually a typo. What I meant there is that the, uh, plate height is, uh, the lowest plate height is seven feet, um, tall. One thing I would add about the, uh, about this dormer, um, in terms of its impact on its neighbors, uh, the neighbor to the north, and I think this is important, um, consideration here. Directly to the north of the property is the driveway for the neighbor's property, and that neighbor to the north is actually one of the largest properties in that part of the village. And we're actually seventy-seven feet from, um, as I said, as I measured it on, uh, Google aerial view there, from our dormer to the nearest point of that, uh, house, uh, to the north. So seventy-seven suite, uh, feet, seventy-seven feet by Sag Harbor standards, because that's almost two floor property, uh, in that part of the village. Okay, uh, so moving on to the, uh, lock coverage, uh, two hundred ninety-four, uh, square feet, um, that's actually mitigated by the, we're gonna completely remove that, uh, ten by ten, um, shed in the back. And in fact, the total lock coverage will, um, be, actually be a little bit less than it is now by the removal of that shed and some of the storage parts taken by it. Uh, we still need the variance for it because, uh, it's still, it's still gonna be over the, um, level summit. The requested north side, um, setback is five point nine, uh, nine feet is due to the, uh, just continuing the existing, um, north wall of the house. It's not coming any closer to that. And, um, there's very small, uh, variance on the side, side yard that we needed. It's, uh, point five, uh, feet. Just, uh, test D here. As noted, the overall scale of the house will remain, uh, for the neighborhood, uh, after the, uh, sanitary system, uh, compliance. We've just got, got started on the inside of that. The house has been owned by the, uh, current owners for about six months, and they haven't done any work, uh, yet requiring, um, variance or, um, or.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? How many bedrooms are there?
There would be three, two, or a second floor. I think, uh, there's a room on the first floor that's sort of, uh, um, I, I think would be, uh, kept to this bedroom as well. So it would be a four, four bedroom sanitary system.
So you need parking for. Three cars, right?
Yeah.
Probably. Drivers.
So you didn't notice on this, that you never, you, you didn't get a percentage?
Yeah, it's, um, thirty, I think it worked out to be thirty-five point seven percent or something from that.
So could we, um, you, you, could you add that to the plans along with the GFA calculations? Because they're not actually on the, or it's not on the drawings that I have. Well, the, um, you could add that, um, but also the GFA calculation and the, and the fifty percent rule calculation should be on the drawing somewhere. Great, um, and then just to prove that you can accommodate three cars. It looks like you can. I mean, it does put a lot of, um, pyramid violation on the north side of the property. There's not much on the south side. Alex, do you have any comments?
Sorry about that, I was muted. No, I'm okay.
I, I just make a note on building coverage. If you go from what's allowed twenty percent to twenty-four point oh five percent, it's actually an increase of twenty percent, not four point five percent. And the same thing with the next one, it's an increase of twenty-six point seven percent, so, um, four percent doesn't sound like much, but twenty percent means a significant variance.
No, I, you know.
If you, if you say four percent, you're assuming that a hundred percent is allowed. What's allowed is twenty percent. So if you go to twenty-four point five percent, it's twenty percent more than what's allowed.
Though I would access the mitigating factor that we are removing that, uh, it doesn't count towards, yeah, but we are removing that shed, which is a good hundred square feet.
Yeah, the shed is big. I mean.
There might even be some pyramid violations in that, I didn't bother to do the calculation for it.
I just have a question on the, uh, the pyramid on the side yard. Four point one feet. And you say fifteen feet is required and five point nine?
I, I believe that is a typo, uh, because we have four tenths for leaves, because the setbacks are actually ten feet.
Okay.
Same with neighbor's house. No, I, this is a, this is sensitive addition to a historic house, and it doesn't change the look of the house from the roadside.
Right.
In terms of the, um, the one neighbor, there's only one window, which that would be noted as the, uh, south elevation over the mudroom. Um, and it's a bedroom, so there's no increase in activity towards the house, which is adjacent to it. Opposite elevation, which is north. It's quite some distance away. This has, uh, literally no impact on anyone's quality of life, so, uh, I, I feel that I'm comfortable with the addition, but as the former chairman brought up, it's a numbers question, you know, how do we, um, address that? And, um, you know, we, we.
That's just my nitpicking. I can never get the building inspector, building inspector to do the math the way I think it should make it. I didn't mean that as, that it was gonna be a turn around because of that. Also, I just make an observation that the addition put on the house to the south is so huge and looming over this, that what they're doing is, is small compared to that. I don't know how that was ever allowed.
Prior to zoning, maybe, I don't know.
I think it was prior to going, Louis, back, I, I, just looking at the age of that addition, I think it was probably when the pyramid was five feet up.
It was. I, I've lived across the street with this property for over thirty years and, uh, recall that house under construction when the code was five feet from the grade to your pyramid. So having said that, if that code applied.
I'm comfortable with the addition. I think that it's a large pyramid variance, but you're suffering from the fact that the existing house is so close to the property line, and I think that that would be one of our mitigating, um, you know, circumstances that it's almost, um, you know, it's only three to four feet from the property, the north property.
We possibly shield. That addition, which is closest to one-story mudroom, by code, it needs an exterior light. So if that's left on, it has potential to affect the neighbor when, is there screening or anything, you know, maybe we just take a look at that, um. I don't know.
You mean the door to the mudroom?
The door to the mudroom by, by international building code needs a light, and if someone left the light on all night, you know, would that annoy the neighbor? Because it's only three feet away, as was pointed out, so. Other than that, I have no comments.
Damon and Alex, do you have anything to add?
Again, you know, the house is, is close to the property line and, you know, the, the additions are really, are modest. So they're not asking for a whole lot and they're taking, you know, taking the shed down, so I don't have any major angst.
Anyone from the public?
I feel the same way. It's pretty modest and they are dealing with a constrained side yard.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address?
Yes, this is Stacy. Why get on?
You're on.
I am.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
You're on, uh, you were on. Are you not on now? Okay, all right, could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Stacy Penny Baker, uh, two oh six Madison Street, Sag Harbor, New York.
Wait, could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you, proceed.
Yes, um, I'm the neighbor to the north, and I always had just one or two questions, um. I'm glad that they're taking the shed away. Uh, and that the basement, are they gonna raise the house and put a new basement in? I'm a little unclear. I've got the, uh, design here.
Uh, that is actually a great question, and I can't say we have a definitive answer to that. I think our inclination at first was going to be no. Based on some, uh, feedback, I actually literally just got back today from the, uh, septic engineer, and which I haven't even shared to the, uh, with my client yet, it's looking like you might have to do one of those things where part of the, uh, basement is on a slab, so it's gonna be five foot clear, I'm going to wait this next little nurse here, I'm sorry, so that the, um, the, um, septic is going to be five feet. So how to fit it, and then they force our hand to have to raise the house. Having said that, if we do do that, we're not gonna make the house any taller than that, which is, is a bridge height or anything like that, or support height would all be exactly. So it's a little bit, um, uh, having worked that out yet.
So there would be no increase in the pyramid, right, Alex? Great. Anything else?
I just got here about half of that, so, but I'm assuming that, uh, he said that he'll leave the basement as is?
Well, I guess there's a question, but the house itself will not get taller.
I guess. Uh, I, I, I've seen a lot of basements in Sag Harbor, and that is one of the best basements as far as, um, its antiquity, uh, than I've seen in a long while, and it was in good shape when I saw it. So I just wanted to add my two cents that it has nice old, uh, uh, has a nice old quality to it that's rare.
I think, uh, yeah, once again, I think our inclination at this, this stage is not to raise the house, but there are some septic issues that might force our hand, um.
You would put the septic in the backyard, I'm assuming?
Uh, no, we're gonna try to get it in the front yard.
Oh, the front yard?
Yeah.
Okay.
What the health department generally likes to say, they may allow us to put it in the backyard if we just don't have it put in the front yard. And we're just kind of starting the, um, engineering for the septic system, which is gonna be top of a little property like that.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Anything, nothing else?
Yeah, thank you.
Good comment. That feels so good.
Sure, you can just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Chris Gialvo, um, I'm the owner of two twelve Madison, but.
Great, can you?
My wife and I custom live in Northport.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
I don't wanna make Anthony mad, because it seems like this is going well, and I don't wanna say anything to shoot myself in the foot, but I wanted to introduce myself to you. My, my wife and I, when we bought this house, we bought it because of its historic integrity, and I know this is more of an ARB argument, but, um, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to preserve and not replace, uh, restore and not rip out. And to your point, to my neighbor, um, who just had a comment, if we do have to relocate any part of the basement, we're gonna reuse all of that stone one hundred percent. I'm even working on already trying to source some of that stone on the chance that we have to extend anything so that we can match it. Um, but, you know, to, to, to the addition as well, it seems like everyone is, is on board that it's modest. You know, one thing that kind of forced our hand is when you walk in the house, you have that beautiful, historic staircase. And we wanna own this house forever, and my goal is to, you know, potentially have the opportunity to come back, want a holder and use it. Having a staircase, um, that, you know, is a little bit more accessible for us in the future, um, was a goal of ours, and having that roof line allows us to get that in the back of the house as well and access our master bedroom. Um, so that kind of forced our hand on, 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 you know, the roof line being more of a shed, uh, versus a traditional cable style, uh, roof line. And, um, yeah, aside from that, um, you know, I appreciate everyone's commentary tonight, and you have my word. Whatever your feedback is, is a main goal of ours, that this house from the street maintains its historic integrity, uh, and that we have as minimal impact as possible. I appreciate your commentary. Thanks.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, this has to be renoticed.
Okay.
Correct, Liz?
Yes.
For Alex?
Well, I, I, I do have some questions about this, just, just to make sure we get this straight, so I'm not coming back here again and again. Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna give Liz, I'm gonna send Liz the percentage by which we're expanding the house, remember that exact percentage is the GFA numbers. Making sure that B through D are.
Yeah, you don't need the variance, yeah.
Yeah, for any of those.
Yeah.
And then at that point in time, I'm gonna get a notice, just like I did originally, a notice package and a new poster, and I put the new mailing in and the new poster.
But not, not right away, like that comes out.
I, I know that, yeah, but it will be, it, I'll get it in time for the next month.
The ten day, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, can we ask to have a decision written pending that or not? Um, you, uh, that's a good question. Um, I was just wondering, um, if we can have a decision written pending that, that, okay, let's, so. Could I have a motion to, number? We're gonna adjourn, okay. So could I have a motion to adjourn two twelve Madison Street?
Me so, oh.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, could I have a motion to, um, have our attorney, uh, write a decision for two twelve, uh, Madison Street, favorable decision for the variances? Pending, uh, that the fifty, fifty percent rule is, um, under fifty percent.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So now, decision. So now, decisions. Just two decision.
The first decision is for 133 Main Street. This is an application converting the existing non having accessory garage. The application, second story, has the accessory garage, which is drawn, the streets do not conform. Accessory structure will remain the same and is always changed from one group to another.
I'm sorry, Liz, you're cutting out a little bit. I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Can you hear me now? I'll go slower. Okay, so the variances are are under section 300 dash 9.6 and 300 dash 6.4A of the Sag Harbor Village Code. To allow one, the minimum business establishment to be 412 square feet, where 800 square feet are required in the BB zoning district. And then also to allow nine parking spaces to remain where twelve spaces are required. So we need a variance for three parking spaces. And again, this would still allow a non conforming accessory structure, garage structure, to be changed to a retail structure. Old actual structure remaining the same. So the board did get input from the planning board regarding the parking variance, and so the reasons set forth need to be determined eventually to and by car tests and distracting the residents.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision for, I don't know, which decision is this?
133 Main.
133 Main Street as written?
So move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Me.
20 Washington Avenue. This was an application to allow an as-built retaining wall to remain constructed one foot from the side yard where three feet is required. And for determined to grant a variance under section 300 dash 4.3 to allow two foot variance for the reasons set forth in the determination.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision for 20 Washington Avenue as written?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to close the public meeting? Whatever date this is, 17 October.
So move whatever it is.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Bye, Barbara. Good night, everybody.
Night, thank you.